Please take your seat. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have the invocation by Pastor Dwayne Matthews of New Testament Gospel Church in Rex. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you would stand with me.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that we also have a moment of silence for Commissioner Pota Costas?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. And before the pastor comes, we would observe a minute of silence for the passing of Commissioner Pota Costa, who was the Commissioner with Fayette County. Thank you, Pastor.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we enter this meeting on tonight invoking Your presence, Your guidance, counsel, and Your wisdom. The Scripture says, "Your word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path." We pray that on tonight every decision that is rendered is held up to that light, that every leader is guided by that light, and that that light, it's the guiding beacon that takes this county into a prosperous future. We pray for our leaders as they guide us, as You guide them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the July 7, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The Board will adopt this evening's agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments?
I do, Ms. Davis. I'd like to ask the Board to hold resolution. I apologize to get to it. The resolution having to do with the Carl Vincent Institute. Ms. Barnes?
Eighteen.
Yeah, 2015, 181.
Twenty fifteen, one eighty-one. I'm sorry, just got there. Yes. I think to ask the Board to hold that item.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right. I'm also going to ask that we hold Resolution 2015-186 dealing with Tax Commissioner Clayton County to conduct judicial interim foreclosures of tax executions. We are following up on some more analysis of that proposal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Any others?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Have a request to add an amendment to an existing contract with Dr. Elizabeth Perry, providing for the terms and conditions under which services will be provided to the Clayton County Police Department's Animal Control Division.
Okay, I'll put that in form of a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It's unanimous.
Is there a copy of that amendment?
Yes, it's on my desk.
Did you not get a copy?
One eighty-seven.
Is that what this is right here? No, it's something different.
That's a single.
Two fifty-one, is this it? Dr. Elizabeth Perry?
Maybe they just didn't get passed down.
Oh. It stuck with the chair.
Must've ran out.
This number one eighty-seven?
Give that to the Commissioner.
I don't have one either.
Oh, you don't have one?
No.
So how many are we missing? Just one?
Two, I guess.
I don't have one.
Now they go yours right there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the amendment?
It's to extend the contract with Dr. Perry, the vet for the police department. Her contract will expire July fifteenth, and we need additional time. The county needs additional time to procure those services.
We need six more months?
No, it will extend to December thirty-first.
So we need six more months?
Is she the veterinarian?
It is. She's a veterinarian.
Okay, but we're looking to hire a full-time veterinarian. So once we hire the full-time veterinarian, then her services will be no longer needed, correct?
Correct, and we can, I believe, terminate her contract by providing her with a certain amount of notice.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I also have a request to add as an emergency item, a memorandum of-
I'm sorry, did we take a vote?
I'm sorry.
We need to take a vote. Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and second to add Resolution 2015-187.
Okay, I'm offering that as a motion. Is there a second?
We have a motion and second on the floor.
Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
And then I have a request to add as an emergency item, a memorandum of understanding to allow Commissioner Sana Singleton Gregory to partner with the Castellini Company and American Community Trust to host a job fair, back-to-school, and community outreach event at the Carl Rotenizer Recreation Center on August the eighth.
Commissioner Gregory, would you like to offer that up as a motion?
Yes, so move.
All right, I'll second. Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Anything else, Ms. Barnes?
No, sir.
All right.
Sorry, that's all I have.
Anything else from any Board member? Hearing on, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda with the noted changes.
Still move.
Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
We have two sets of minutes for approval. Approval of the June sixteen, two thousand fifteen Regular Business Meeting minutes and the June twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen Special Call Meeting minutes.
A motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
I'll second it. Probably move in second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
We will now have public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens signed up to speak before the Board. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residence for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Carl Swenson.
Ladies and gentlemen, good to see you again. Carl Swenson with Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee. As you know, I've been talking about the Clayton County Government, Governmental Finance Corporation here lately. What I didn't get a chance to say because I ran out of time was the purpose of the corporation, and the purpose is to do business with the county, which is a conflict of interest. Reading through the purposes, which you were given a copy of that at the last meeting, clearly states that you're doing business with yourselves. So that is a direct conflict of interest. I don't know if any of you have withdrawn or tendered any resignation from this one or not, but in lieu of that, it sounds like there's some crimes being committed here. I also want to say that there is another corporation that is being run out of here. This is called DACC. DACC is handling the work with the Development Authority, which is also incorporated, and they're dealing with a forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-nine square foot government facility at sixteen thirty Phoenix Boulevard. They are able to handle all of the rents and all the information that goes with running the place, okay? And they also receive expenses and pay the whole nine yards. So this corporation is using as its address one twelve Smith Street, and the number of corporations, like I've said, just keeps going on and on. Another one that I found was the Clayton County Community Services Authority. I like this one. Chairman, you probably know that you're CEO of that one as well, and they have a pretty hefty budget. They seem to be able to go through or get grants in the tune of about almost nine million, and I don't know where these monies are actually reflected on the CAFRA. I'm sure they are, but I can't find them. BG Yates is the one that's the incorporator on this, and there's a whole host of people that are members, but I don't know what the purpose of having these corporations is. Nobody can explain that because when people like these people here elect you, they assume that they're electing representatives that are going to delegate authority, not create corporations. Corporations shield liability. Now, I understand that liability is a real important aspect here, but you can't, you can't have, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You just can't do it. And we know that all of this is being made possible by the attorneys, and we know that the county attorneys are being advised and handled by the local and also by the ACCG, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, which has as their core group the attorneys that are also writing all of the legislation up at the State Capitol. Not some of it, all of it. The corporations advise some of our legislators because really they don't know how to write it. So the, these twelve, the legislative group, write all of the legislation, and they write the legislation or advise the counties on how to write their legislation. So it goes right down the pike, each and every one.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Swenson, your time has expired.
Heather, looks like Middendorf. I apologize for the last name.
Good evening. It's Middendorf. Thank you. Heather, with this Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee, I would like to yield my time to Mr. Swenson if I could.
I don't believe we allow that, do we?
We can't do that.
Never been done in the past?
No, you can't do that.
Okay.
Sir, the-
She has to do the three minutes. She can come.
She has to. If she signed up, she's the one who must be the speaker.
We're talking freedom of speech, and guys, she couldn't say, she couldn't say it.
Just let her continue to read what you got there.
I'm sorry?
If you just let her continue to read where you left off at, that would be admissible.
Well, it's a matter of the research that's being done, sir, and the research is, I'm the one that actually puts this forward, and we know that it takes more than three minutes to do so. I can't get any kind of a meeting with you guys, so what I have to do, I have to do in public. So that's why these works this way, and if it's okay with you, I would like to proceed and talk a little bit more-
Well, we have never allowed that before, so we're not going to start now, but again, I have met with you on several occasions. I don't have a problem with meeting with you.
We can, but there's a whole bunch more here to go through, and again, I will-
Did he say where he was at? He give his residence? He didn't.
Yeah, it's before, but.
He need to do it to him.
Gail Braun.
Same, she wanted to yell.
No. Okay. Tom, Tom Hawn? Wen, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? It's the spelling.
Tom Wen, Clayton County. Basically, the question I want to ask the Commissioner is, from the last meeting, I heard Greg Porter was demoted, and I want to know the reason why. A police chief who is responsible to the very community, who reduce crime and hold his man accountable, is demoted to nine-one-one operator, which has very little effect, power, and efficiency for the community. So please explain to me why, and not only myself, but also a few familiar faces who were supporters of Greg Porter last, who were here last time.
Sir, I still stand by if it was not an demotion, and he was placed in a position that, in my opinion, would be for the betterment of the county.
How so?
We're not going to discuss this in its totality up here, but the Board voted for the transfer of Chief Porter, and it was done. Now, if you want to get into particulars or anything else, feel free to call my office. I'll sit down, talk to you all day. Thank you.
All right.
Is that Ellen Rodney?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you, sir. Jeffrey Benoit.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeffrey Benoit, Clayton County. On the last meeting, Monday, I heard talk quite often of transparency. Transparency, transparency. Let's go back to October, I'm sorry, November, twenty fourteen, November fourth to be exact, when this Board hired Alex Kohelis for the tune of six months at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Never did they once post that position. Never did they once receive applicants who were interested in that position. Never did they once bring that before this Board, before they hired him. That gives indication that somebody violated the Sunshine Act to let him know what was going to happen and that he was a selected individual without any competition. I even went to the HR and asked them for those people that have submitted applications for this job or the job announcements. Neither one of them were available. How do we do that? And we're still talking about transparency. We spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the previous COO who was let go six months. Let's just take for granted she's only given half of that salary, but in the contract given to Alex Kohelis, it simply says he has a hundred and thirty thousand dollars annual salary, but his annual time to serve was six months. Did we pay out over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in one year to the same, to two people? And then last week, we're talking about our budgets. I would submit to you that the money you're spending is not yours. It's taxpayers', and we want the transparency. The very transparency that you're asking for is the same transparency we're asking for, and this is the documented proof in which you folks did. You let one individual go, you hired another one in her place, never even give them the opportunity of challenging for that position. It never was posted through HR, and then, right before your legal counsel, they allowed it to happen without even advising you that you're breaking the law. And we're talking about transparency. Ladies and gentlemen, they have voted for you to be representatives, not to blindside us, and I'm telling you that these folks here would say the same thing if their jobs wasn't on the line and they were not worried about what would happen in this right-to-work state, or better known as slave, slave owner. Let's get back to business, and that is taking care of the business that we were elected to do and be transparent about the business that we're doing in Clayton County.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes.
That concludes public comment. We will now have our first proclamation whereby Clayton County observes July two thousand fifteen as National Park and Recreation Month. Will the interim COO, Dietrich Stanford, and any staff members, please come forward? Ask the Commissioners to rise from their respective seats at the table and join them for the presentation.
Come here, still tall. I wake you right in the front.
Guys, come forward a little bit more up there.
All right, tiptoes in the back. All three, one, two, three. Again. One, two, and three. Okay, hang on. Okay? Back up for this one. All three, one, two, and three. Okay, three.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County observes July two thousand and fifteen as National Park and Recreation Month, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this county, including Clayton County, Georgia; and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater from flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetated buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide advice for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners observed the month of July as Park and Recreation Month and recognized the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July two thousand and fifteen as Park and Recreation Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join me in this recognition and celebration by taking part in the many activities and programs that are offered through our Parks and Recreation Department. In witness thereof, I am here to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the seventh day of July in the year two thousand and fifteen. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.
Our last proclamation is a proclamation whereby Clayton County recognizes community activist Christopher Gallagher. Is Mr. Gallagher here? If he would please come forward, as well as any family or friends.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes Christopher Gallagher for community activism, whereas Christopher Gallagher is an involved and dedicated resident of the Rivers Edge Plantation Community Association located in Fayetteville, Georgia, and is a native of Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. And whereas Christopher Gallagher serves on the Neighborhood Watch Team, which was formed three years ago in response to an increase in crime, and since the formation has seen the crime rate dramatically decline. And whereas Mr. Gallagher and the Neighborhood Watch Team work closely with the Clayton County Police Department and the Clayton County Sheriff's Department, which he attributes to their success. And whereas Mr. Gallagher helps his fellow residents, checks on the elderly who live alone, and watches the kids to make sure they safely board the buses for school. And whereas Christopher is a dedicated son who takes care of his ill mother who lives with him and a dedicated nephew who takes care of his aunt who has cancer and lives in Douglasville, Georgia. And whereas Mr. Gallagher regularly attends Commissioner Rooks' first Saturday talks and the Clayton County Board of Commission meetings. And whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes and honors Christopher Gallagher for his outstanding commitment to the community. Now therefore I, Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing Christopher Gallagher for his community activism. Through the dedication of citizens such as Christopher, our communities are able to thrive, and Clayton County is a better place in which to live, work, and play. In witness thereof, I am here to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the seventh day of July in the year two thousand and fifteen. Shayna M. Rooks, Commissioner.
We will now have a presentation whereby Clayton County acknowledges thirteen student recipients of the two thousand and fifteen Scholarship Program of the Kids Outdoor Initiative. With the interim COO, Mr. Stanford, please come forward.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, as part of the statewide Kids Outdoor Initiative and the Outdoor Bill of Rights approved by the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and nine, for the sixth consecutive year, Clayton County Parks and Recreation was chaperoned thirteen Clayton County seventh and eighth graders, middle school students on a three-day trip to Fortson four H Camp in Hampton, Georgia, July seventeen through the nineteenth to experience and study Georgia's natural environment. The Outdoor Bill of Rights recommends that every child by the age of fourteen should have the opportunity to experience a list of ten distinct outdoor activities such as exploring nature, camping under the stars, following a trail, playing on a team. The winners for this year's trip were chosen by submitting a two-hundred-and-fifty-word essay describing the outdoor activity they most wanted to participate in as outlined in the Outdoor Bill of Rights. The trip is courtesy of the scholarship provided from proceeds of the Lake Spivey Road Race and the Clayton County Board BBQ competition that we have held annually, and the recipients are-
Aaron Blanchard, Elite Scholars Academy. Alan Chavez, Elite Scholars Academy. Charlie Cooper, Eagles Landing Christian Academy. Jayla Freeman, Kendrick Middle School. Kyla Guillaume, Elite Scholars Academy. Robert House, Elite Scholars Academy. Katie Johnson, MD Rob- Katie Johnson, MD Roberts Middle School. Darian Long, Elite Scholars Academy. Marcus Moses, Rex Middle School. And Nadia Timmons, Morrow Middle School.
Chairman and Board, the first activity we will do, we'll teach them how to walk faster. But with that being said, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the chaperones for this event. We have two of our staff members, Stephanie and Justin, will come up. They will take care of the two-day excursion as for a chaperone, so let's give them a big round of applause. And the photo, I think we're done.
And while we're waiting for her to set up, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our new Director of Economic Development, Courtney Poe. Please start, stand up Courtney. Give them a round of applause, please. He is out of Chicago, and he has a lot of great ideas, and Mr. Poe, I'll be expecting to get bum rushed, because a lot of people want to talk to you.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you so much for the opportunity. This is the first chance that I've had to come before the Commission since the privilege of being appointed to represent Clayton County on the MARTA Board of Directors, and I really do want to say thank you very much. I was looking for my colleague that also serves on the MARTA Board with me, Mr. Jerry Griffin. We were actually here together earlier today for a meeting. I don't see him here. But we have two representatives from Clayton County that serve on the MARTA Board, and for the benefit of citizens, because we're appointed from Clayton County, doesn't mean we only work and benefit the system about Clayton County, but of course, being home, this is our first priority. And as a citizen working towards getting transit systems for Clayton County, I made a personal commitment to come back and update not only the Commission but the citizens of how things were going with MARTA, and to give you an update. So let me say first of all that while I am here and we have some of the wonderful MARTA staff members with us, there will be a jurisdictional briefing that MARTA gives each county and each jurisdiction quarterly. And so mine is from the aspect of the community update. And I want to introduce to you, who will be helping me this evening, the CAO of MARTA, Mr. Edward Johnson. He's been here many times before, along with the planners, planning staff, Don Williams, and Ms. Delanda Crane. All of these people are very key, because as you see the routes and you see the buses traveling along, and you see the public hearings, and we're determining where future routes are going to be, these are just part of the team of people that actually make this happen. And the community input that you give, it goes to them. So it's very important that you recognize that. I'm going to be brief, give you a couple of big items, big points first of all. When Clayton County voted in November to join MARTA, we actually joined the ninth-largest transit system in the country. MARTA is the ninth-largest transit system in the U.S. We have a budget, MARTA has a budget of four hundred million dollars a year. And right now Clayton County is contributing about twenty-nine point four million dollars per year to that budget overall. That does not include what is also being held in reserve in our account for the other half penny. MARTA on an average day serves over four-hundred-and-fifty thousand riders every single day. And as we go forward with the slide, we'll actually have a breakdown of what our ridership looks like in Clayton County, and I'm going to go real fast. Commissioners have a copy of this PowerPoint, and feel free to use it to your advantage whenever you need to. And also, we are all available for other questions and comments later on. We implemented Phase One, as you all know, on March 21st. We rolled out three routes. We actually extended Routes 15 and 55 from the southeast portion of Atlanta and parts of DeKalb County that actually come over into Clayton County. Those are Routes 15 and Routes 55. And we added what we call Route 196, which used to be the old C-Trend Route 501, 501-503. And right now, 501 is probably the heaviest route that we have. And Mr. Johnson, if you will help me so I don't have to turn, 196 is running about how many per day?
Yeah, we're doing just less, sort of two thousand passengers per trip, excuse me, per day on the 196.
And the other routes are growing in numbers. At first, 15 and 55 was kind of trickling in and very slow, but the numbers of riders have growingly increased on those routes as familiarity and people knowing that they're available has also increased steadily. The Route 15...
May I ask a question? Is that okay? When you say two thousand, are you meaning two thousand Clayton riders?
Yes ma'am. That particular route originates from the College Park Station coming into Clayton County, and there's over two thousand passenger trips that are generated from that particular route.
Passenger trip could mean two people, there and back per passenger, depending on who's riding it.
No, that's one trip.
We count them by trip. In the technical world, it's unlinked trips, and so we have at least two thousand passenger boardings each day.
That's right. So it could be half that.
Madam State Rep, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, that's all right.
Madam State Rep, where is the 15, and is the 15 Boulder Crest?
That's what I'm going to get to you, okay. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, I don't know if you can see the map, you may be able to see it better on your page, but it actually comes off of Cantler Road. And it comes from Cantler Road and comes along Memorial Drive, and it comes all the way down into, is that the Forest Parkway? That's the one that comes into Clayton County via Forest Parkway.
And then turns up Boulder Crest?
Boulder Crest.
Boulder Crest, uh-huh. And that's actually going to be expanded at some point as well in the future. So, right now, it runs about every thirty minutes on weekdays, and on the weekends every forty minutes. The 55 actually runs Jonesboro Road and Hutchins Road, running about every twenty minutes during the week, every thirty minutes on Saturday, and every forty-five minutes on Sunday. We're actually averaging increased riderships on that route, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine during the weekdays, two-hundred-and-twenty-four on Saturdays, and on Sundays, a hundred-and-fifty-seven. A lot of people are actually using them for churches. So then the next one, who's, you got it, Don? The College Park, Church Street, Upper Riverdale Road, Mount Zion, that's the 196, and right now that's the heaviest route. And that's the two thousand rides, rides, trips per day. The thing that's to note about that is that's only half of Riverdale Road. Right now currently, it comes from College Park Station, it comes Riverdale Road, but it makes the left turn onto Garden Walk. It does not go the full length of Riverdale Road. It does not go all the way down Church Street. So just imagine in August when we actually extend it all the way down Riverdale Road, I mean, to say that it will double is probably an understatement, but that's only half of Riverdale Road. And again, the frequency is every thirty minutes. And one of the concerns that we receive a lot of comment on is that during rush hour, like around four-thirty, five o'clock, six, there's standing room only on that 196. Every day, every day, it's packed beyond capacity. So there is a greater need, and there is some talk, am I right, Don, about adding buses?
The frequency and adding the buses.
Right. Okay. The mobility service, just for clarification, is a little bit different. Those are the smaller, shorter buses that you see, and they are used for the handicapped, disabled community, the elderly community, and that service actually goes from door to door. It picks you up at your, at your location, can be from your home or from an appointment. It takes you to your destination, and will also do a return trip. It's a little bit more involved because you have to qualify, and there's qualification procedures, and we've been doing some workshops and have some others planned for that community to know how to apply for the service, and also how to call and make appointments and schedule appointments when they need that mobility service. And it, right now, only the routes that we are running qualifies because you have to, by federal law, be within three-fourths of a mile of an existing route in order to use the mobility service. So quite naturally, as we increase the routes, then the mobility service will increase. And that's been a real godsend for a lot of people that need to go to dialysis three times a week, or for people that have to go to grocery shopping, or just basic needs to be able to get door-to-door service is a real big need. And you can see some of the numbers that we actually are showing right now. The slide says August 1st, but the actual date for new buses, we're going to roll out three new routes on August 8th. And probably the most exciting is the fact that we will roll out service in Lovejoy for the first time, because C-Trend never went to Lovejoy. We will have a flex route that connects in Lovejoy from the Justice Center. And the flex route will actually frequent Lovejoy, the community center. It will make the rounds and pick people up in designated locations that will be publicized, and bring them to the main routes, which will be at the Justice Center, and they can extend their travel further on that way. The other routes you can see, Route 191, which will go the full length of Riverdale Road and the airport, it will go via Flint River Road, and this will also add service that we had such a need and request for via 138. Highway 138 has a lot of businesses along that route, and even making sure that we get back to the center portion of Terra Boulevard. So that's going to be a key route. The Justice Center, you know, the need for that is absolutely awesome. I've told you before, we had a lot of concern about people missing court appointments, reporting for probation, and things like that. That's going to be a big help. It will also be extended a little more on Upper Riverdale Road. It will be going Old Dixie Highway. We will be adding the CW Grant Parkway, which I understand has just gotten some extension to the Parkway itself. And the terminal at Hartsfield-Jackson, I understand, is going to be at the International Station as opposed to where it was before. So that's going to be a new addition as well. It's going to be going directly to the airport, but you can get, right now, we don't go directly to the airport from Clayton County. We go to College Park Station and then you transfer. But this route will make it available to go directly to the airport, to the international terminal. And I won't go through all of these. The information will also be available. I think one of the good things on that Route 193 that I will point out is that we had a lot of interest in being able to go to Battle Creek. And Battle Creek Road is where the social services are, for food stamps, for the aging kinship care. And so Battle Creek will be added on Route 193. Also, the Porsche factory in that area will also be added on August 8th in that 193 route. Forest Park will be getting additional, and again, the Boulder Crest and Anvil Block, we will be adding the Phoenix Boulevard, which will also go over to Godbe Road. This is really good, because it'll go Phoenix Boulevard, Godbe Road, go down to Old National, make the left on Old National, and go all the way down to Highway 138, and then come back to Clayton County down 138. So it'll pick up that 138 corridor, if you can visualize with me. Am I getting it right, Don? Okay, we talked a little bit about the flex route for Lovejoy, but if you look on the slide, it gives you a little bit more information. It's going to be making stops at the Lovejoy Community Center on Hastings Bridge Road. It'll also go to the McDonnell Road, it'll turn left on Terra Boulevard, left on Lovejoy Road, right on Talmadge Road, it'll go to the Lovejoy City Hall, that'll be another service stop. It'll make a loop in the Panhandle Road area, and then back to the Justice Center. They will run the flex route during the week from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. On Saturdays, the flex route will run from 9:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Right now, there will not be service on Sundays, but understand, as the need is demonstrated, any of those are subject to change. Just communicate with our planning staff, let us know, and they will make those adjustments. The ridership chart, I'm going to let Mr. Johnson kind of take that one. It's a little bit much for me.
Yeah, this is just a depiction of a day-by-day look at the ridership. When we were speaking with staff a couple of months ago, they thought that you would be interested in being able to see how the services are being rendered on a daily basis. And so that just gives you a depiction of what happens, just in Clayton County only. And if Mr. Williams can change the slide, this gives an idea of what the services look like with the Route 15 and the Route 55. Those two routes were extended from the Fulton County area into Clayton County. So I wanted to show you that those routes are very heavy routes as they stand coming out of Fulton County. But we believe that with the additional services that we'll be putting in place in August, it's going to drive more people to those routes, and so you're going to see the ridership numbers increase on the 15 and 55. And if I may, just real quickly, we're just really so excited about what's happening on Route 196. But we want you to understand, and I'd be so alarmed about Route 55 and Route 15. It takes a while for transit routes to mature, but we believe that we've gotten off onto a very good start. But as we add more services within Clayton County and connections to those routes, you will see that performance really improve.
Thank you, Edward. Okay, and just real quickly, just in terms of some other performances. At this point, MARTA and the county jointly together, we've held a total of eleven job fairs. We've had at least three thousand, more than three thousand, but at least three thousand attendees for the job fairs. There have been a hundred and thirty-six new hires, and forty-five of those have been from Clayton County. There's some good... There's some good coverage from the first rider on that College Park bus for March 21st. And she also made the documentary, I, I will mention that in a minute. But she actually is featured in the documentary film that we'll talk about. And here's another gentleman that was riding the first day. That was an exciting day, by the way. We've had a tremendous amount of positive news coverage. I'm not gonna stand here and try to pretend like everything has been easy breezy, and there have not been any hiccups. But for the main part, it really has been a wonderful working relationship between MARTA, with the commission, with the community. And this is something new. We all have to understand that this is the first time MARTA has done this in forty-something years. This is the first time Clayton County has ever done it. And like I said, we made that vote in November, and we were up and running service in March, four months, four months. And so I really do think that the county commission deserves a great round of applause and appreciation for making things happen. I really do. I really do. And, and also for MARTA, because, you know, I had to say to somebody one day, they were complaining, and I said, "Do you realize that from November the 4th to March 21st, we have brand-new buses running regular routes, and no money has exchanged hands yet?" So, you know, when you put that in context, I think we've done a wonderful job. I really do appreciate it. And the last thing that I will cover, Mr. Chairman, is just safety and security, which is always a concern. And it is, it is one of the priorities that MARTA does have. I don't work for MARTA, so that, that's one thing that I want the community to, to be clear about. I know you guys know. But I don't work for MARTA, I represent the citizens. You know, I represent Joe, and Freddie, and Francis, and Frank. But it's important to us and our children and our, our grandmothers. And I was interested in knowing about the safety and the security, because you can see so much on television, and you can hear so much. So we went to Chief Dunham and just said, "Okay, give me the truth, give us the numbers, break it down for Clayton County." There have been two vehicle accidents involving MARTA vehicles since they started March 21st. One was a side swipe that happened in Riverdale. Minimal damage, no injuries. The other, which also happened in Riverdale, a private citizen cut off a MARTA bus, and there were minor passenger injuries. In terms of crime, there has not been one criminal incident on the system in Clayton County to this date. And I think that's great. And that pretty much is, is the update. I will just kind of give a couple of things to look forward to. As I said, the new service for the, the additional routes will begin on August 8th. On August 7th, our, our community organizations, along with hopefully the county, but definitely with the city of Lovejoy, we're gonna have a community event down in Lovejoy. And we're going to be actually showing the documentary that some of the local filmmakers, including Tyler Perry Studios, donated their time and talent to actually capture some of the people walking the community, capture some of the people knocking on doors, and, and the young people out trying to get the service. And so we're, we're hoping to show that first showing of that film on August 7th. And we'll bring information back and send information as we get more from Lovejoy to make sure that the community is very well aware of that. And also, we're looking forward to programs that everybody can be involved in, such as Adopt a Stop. You know, they're still putting up bus stops, they're still putting up bus shelters, there's still things to be worked out, and they're, they're working very hard together to get that done. Very informative meeting that Mr. Stanford pulled together that I thought was wonderful on bus shelters, the advertising versus non-advertising. We're learning, we're moving. And I got a chance to, just two weeks ago, go to the Rail Conference. And, my God, so much to learn and bring back and pass along, which I will be doing. It's a lot to look forward to. I want the commission to really be excited about transit-oriented development, economic opportunity. Anthony Fox has already committed, Anthony Fox is the Secretary of Transportation of Federal Transit Administration, has already committed to come to Clayton County. And I'm hoping to put together a transportation summit, and he will come. Transit-oriented development can bring economic dollars for this community, and we really can capitalize on that. So I look forward to working with all of you on that. And again, official jurisdictional briefings you will look forward to. The senior staff, Mr. Parker, they will come and do those as they do in DeKalb and Fulton and Atlanta. Myself and Mr. Griffin will come before the community as often as you need us to and want us to. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have two.
Yes, ma'am.
In the beginning, you mentioned something about 29 thou, 29 million dollars.
Twenty-nine point four.
Yes. Does that include what MARTA is holding, or that's just?
No, no, no. That's just what they're, that's what they're calculated into their, we just passed the 2016 budget about a month ago. And that's what they have calculated as the Clayton County portion into that budget. That does not include any of the escrow. That includes any of that. That's the sales tax.
So we can add another 20?
Yeah. That's the sales tax.
For less than 1% of our population.
That's the sales tax.
Okay. And I've received several letters regarding trash at the MARTA bus stops. I've sent something, I, I believe the two of us got something from, someone from Premier Gardens off of Garden Walk, and I have witnessed it myself. Now, I have been in Fulton County, I have seen MARTA trucks picking up trash, putting the cans back. Are we gonna have that in Clayton County?
No. Let me, let me try, and then you can finish up. One of the things that was very helpful in the meeting that Mr. Stanford held is that MARTA is contracted with a company called Outdoor Advertising. And outdoor advertising in their contract actually services all of the shelters and things that they've put up and put out. So they, not MARTA, they service and maintain those sites. They pick up the trash, they have a regular route, they have, they pick those up. As of right now, Clayton County is not included in that contract. So there is currently conversation and negotiation going on that will determine whether or not they will include us or accept us into their contract, or, or add us to their contract. Right now, there does not seem to be the will to do that. Or will Clayton County, you all, have the opportunity to seek your own advertiser and make your own agreements and arrangements to do that, and bring some additional revenue through advertising of your own? So that's something that you all will do at, at another time. And then the, the other part of that is that the Premier Gardens situation that you're talking about, and when, when you look at that? That's one, that's the only one I've, I've been made aware of. And, and, you know, I live over there. And that's that walking trail where they go to those two convenience stores, Circle K on the left, Raceway on the right. If you look where the trash is, it's that long walking trail that's been there for years. They walking back and forth to the stores, the trash is on the walking trail. So part of it is apartment responsibility. The other part is, is whatever jurisdiction, and that's part of figuring it out. It's not City of Riverdale, is it College Park, is it the county? You know, who is it on? But because MARTA doesn't have a contract with that, then right now, it's kind of in limbo, but we're working on it.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Working on it.
And, and we're working on some exciting opportunities to do Pride in the Community with some of our young people and some of our organizations to also help with that, Commissioner, that I think you'll like. Anybody else?
I do, I just want to, I know you say you had a meeting, you're working on it, but, you know, seeing the people who ride the bus standing out in the hot sun is just almost cruel. You know, and I just felt like, you know, MARTA, you all can help us out a little bit, you know, with those shelters out there, this is, um... I know you said you're meeting on, I just want to reemphasize that. Also, I get quite a few emails when people call customer service with their complaints, they don't get anything done. Fortunately, I've escalated them on to your community affairs or outreach person. I won't call his name.
Chris Pitts. They need to know.
Buses, um, buses are parked in no parking areas from neighborhoods. I've actually got pictures, things like that. We just really need MARTA's help in maintaining our community here, not having the buses just pull over, you know, right in front of a residential subdivision, which I've seen several times.
They, they need to know. I mean, you know, the names aren't a secret, and they, they need to know who to communicate with for what issues. So that, that, you know, call the name.
And once we know, we will be able to take action on that. Again, if we don't know, we don't know what to do out there, so again...
When, when we have citizens, and, you know, it's very typical for them to contact the commission office. And so for a while, you know, our constituent aides were turning to MARTA customer service. It really was. And so we just really need your, you know, your help. So when we direct citizens to customer service, and then they don't get any response or whatever, and they come back to us.
Well, Madam Commissioner, I have a, a unique situation in that I get text messages that says, "I'm at bus stop number whatever, and the bus was two minutes late, and they didn't tilt it over so I could get on," or, you know, "Had a pleasant driver today." I mean, I get those all day, every day. And, and also, not just from Clayton County. So what I'm saying is that that's how we make it better. I may not elevate every last one of them. You know, sometimes you can kind of explain the process to the person or whatever. And it is a learning curve. Mr. Stanford said, you know, "It's kind of like a new marriage, and we all trying, we all trying to feel our way." And it is. But I, but again, I think that overall, we're doing good. I think overall, we're all trying, we're trying to work it together. And, and when an issue arises, we, we try to address it. If I'm aware of it, I address it. So, and, and I'm, I'm on the board. So none of this day-to-day is my responsibility. But because I'm first and foremost in the community, I take it personally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my only statement is gonna be the 196, heavy issues line. With the expansion, as you said, it's definitely gonna be used even more so. And to have citizens having to stand, you know, you said you're addressing it, and I'm glad you are, but if we can increase the frequency, and like you said, August 8th, I think it is, it's gonna really explode up and down Riverdale Road. So please pay attention to that, and let's address it appropriately.
And the trash.
Fifty-minute frequency, right now, I think it's about 30, so we're, we're cutting it in half, so...
And one of the things we learned was, was, was something that none of us had control over, and we didn't know about it until today, was part of the hangup is in permitting. And so permits were being rejected and sent back. And so that's something now we know that can be addressed. And so some of the requests have been sent back. And so we need to kind of see if we can speed that along, but we weren't aware of that, so... But we thank you all so very much.
All right, and again, thank you for the presentation. Madam Clerk?
The Board will now consider requests of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Please take them together, Ms. Brewer.
Good evening.
I'd like to take 10-2, RFP 10-2 separately.
Which one is it?
1002 regarding the insurance.
Take them all separately, and, I mean, together, except for 10-02, take that last.
Okay, we have recommendations for renewals of, an amendment of annual contracts. The first is RFP 1202 Electrical Services and Maintenance at Clayton County Parks, annual contract with Deco Incorporated doing business with Davidson Electric Company located in Covington, Georgia. The 90-day extension period is from August 1st, 2015, through October 31st, 2015. The second is RFP 1222 Clayton County Transportation and Development Thermal Plastic Park Pavement Markings, annual contract with Midstate Striping Incorporated located in Eaton, Georgia. The 90-day extension period is from August 1st, 2015, through October 31st, 2015. The next is RFP 1406 Tools and Hardware Supplies for Clayton County, annual contract is a multiple award with Squints Feed and Garden Supply Incorporated located in Jonesboro, Georgia, with a renewal period from August 1st, 2015, through July 31st, 2016. WW Granger Incorporated located in Alpharetta, Georgia, with a renewal period of August 1st, 2015, through July 31st, 2016. And Central Turf and Irrigation Company located in Tyrone, Georgia, with a renewal period from September 16th, 2015, through September 15th, 2016. RFP 1420 Clayton County Janitorial Supplies is the annual contract with multiple awards. The first with American Twine and Paper Company located in Ostell, Georgia. Breakthrough Solutions Janitorial located in Snellville, Georgia. Day Paper Company located in Ostell, Georgia. Georgia Correction, Correctional Industries located in Decatur, Georgia. Interboro Packaging Corporation located in Montgomery, New York. CACO Supply Company located in Smyrna, Georgia. People's Janitorial Supply located in Forest Park, Georgia. And Pyramid School Products located in Tampa, Florida. The, the renewal period is from July 15, 2000, July 16th, 2015, through July 15, July 16th, 2015, through July 15th, 2016. RFP 1427 Cooling Treatment and Maintenance Program for Clayton County, annual contract with U.S. Water Service is located in St. Michael, Minnesota. The renewal period is from September 15th, 2015, through September 14th, 2016. RFP 1436 Liquid Asphalt Supply Services for the Department of Transportation and Development, annual contract, multiple awards with Associated Asphalt Company LLC doing business at Seaco Asphalt Emulsions located in Pelzer, South Carolina, with a new renewal period from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2016. And Black Ledge Emulsions Incorporated located in Gulfport, Mississippi, with a renewal period from September 22nd, 2015, through September 21st, 2016. RFP 1218 Non-Emergical Medical Transport, Transport Services for the Clayton County Aging Program, annual contract with MLB Transportation Incorporated located in Tucker, Georgia. The 90-day expen, extension period is from October 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2015. The Board of Commissioners approved this award, award on September 4th, 2012. RFP 1219 Fiber Optic Cabling and Spicing Services for the Clayton County Information Technology Department with the ComTram Group Incorporated located in Beaufort, Georgia. The final renewal period is from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2016. RFP 1232 Deferred Prosecution Program for the Solicitor General's Office Gun Safety Course, annual contract with Operation 21 LLC located in Cummings, Georgia. Final renewal period is from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2016. RFP 1416 Inmate Healthcare for Clayton County Prison, annual contract with Correct Health Clayton LLC located in Atlanta, Georgia. The contract is being revised to, amended to revise terms and service requirements. The first renewal term is from July 15, 2015, through July 14th, 2016. 2014 Y Electronic Monitoring Services and Equipment for the Clayton County Juvenile Court, annual contract with U.S. Communities Agreement 06134 VG1 with VI Incorporated located in Boulder, Colorado. The renewal period is from August 5th through August 4, August 5th, 2015, through August 4th, 2016. Recommendation for award for RFP Package 1515, Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax Splathe Bridge Maintenance at various locations for Clayton County, Georgia. Transportation and Development Department, and the amount of, oh, let me just read that. The amount of $818,560 with LC Whiteford Company located in Atlanta, Georgia. Funding is available through the Transportation and Development Department's Splathe Fund fiscal year and in 2009. And there was a substitution on that product, project for Page 105 of the draft agreement to substitu- to substitute and correct the hours of work to, to eight to five PM. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized the Chairman as his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish intent of the contract and authorize the chief office, chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. We also have recommendation for award for RFQ fifteen thirty five Maintenance Service Proportions of the Clayton County E nine one one Communication Computer System. An amount of ten thousand, four hundred and ninety six dollars and fifty seven cents with Manovo located, located in Marsfield, North Carolina. Funding is available through the Police Department's Repair and Maintenance Office Furniture Fund fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. The request is for you to approve the recommendation authorized the Chairman as his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the ten of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Okay, before we make a motion, I'd like to make a correction, I believe, on RFP number thirteen dash thirty two. You misquoted as twelve dash thirty two. So, I just want to make sure that's the deferred prosecution program for the Solicitor General's Office.
Thank you.
So, just make that correction. Is there a motion to approve?
Stand left.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
Not a question, but because I have been hammering Ms. Brewer so hard about this, on RFP package fifteen fifteen, we have a SLBE that finally meets the requirement. So, very, thank you very much. They finally met the twenty percent requirement.
Any other questions or statements? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Did you have questions?
I do have a question. Do we need a, a, a motion in a second to discuss or no?
No, which one are you talking about?
To the ten dash.
She hasn't read it yet. Ten dash oh two.
Yes, we have to procedurally do that. Ten oh two Insurance Broker.
We didn't, she didn't read it?
No, she hasn't.
She's uncovering now.
She asked me if, never mind.
RFP ten dash zero two.
RFP ten dash zero two Insurance Broker for Property and Casualty Insurance. Annual contract with the McCart Group located in Duluth, Georgia. Extension of annual contract and consent to assignment from the McCart Group to Edgewood Partners Insurance Center located in Duluth, Georgia. The extension period will be from August first, two thousand fifteen through July thirty first, two thousand and sixteen.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
You start, Mr..
Ms. Brewer, help me get my mind around this. I, I ran out of time when I was searching the minutes from earlier this year and last, so wasn't able to put my finger on it. But the McCart Group is the same company or a different insurance broker that we chose not to renew their contract earlier this year except for the lo- long enough window to transfer the healthcare records over?
That was for a different benefit. That was for voluntary benefits.
Right, but is this the same company?
It's the same company, yes.
It's the same? I thought it was Alexandra.
Alexandra.
It's not the same.
It's not the same?
Alexandra.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's, that's the point that I was trying to clarify. And so, second question is, is can you, help me understand why we need an entire year to revise the scope of service to put this back out?
We are looking for one thing and also, I would like to explain with some of the extensions. Since coming in December, I'm looking at the whole pattern procedures. So, we're reviewing a lot of the RFPs to reveal, review the scope and the terms to make sure that we're getting maximum benefit. This is one. We can't renew it on a shorter basis, but that was just annual renewal period for one year. But we are looking at all of the RFPs to make sure that we are getting maximum value and trying to do some more strategic planning and with some of our RFPs that are.
So, okay, I, I buy that. So, why would we want to contract with them for a year? Is it going to take you that long to determine if there's some efficiencies and benefits to put it back out or change it?
There may be in some of the policies that they are providing broker services for, and I don't have the exact dates. It's just not for one policy and there are different periods and I don't have the renewal periods for the individual policies that they are seeking.
But it makes your world a lot easier to do it all at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll buy that. I don't have any other questions.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board will consider the request of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board. Have one item for your consideration this evening. A request for a refund in the amount of fifty three dollars and twenty four cents to Ebony Sims Crunch Time Vending in Marl, Georgia. For the purpose of refunding the business license fees paid by Ms. Sims to the Community Development Department. The applicant was not approved to receive a business license based on denial by the Clayton County Community Development Department Planning and Zoning Division. The business type does not meet county code for residential zoning.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board will now consider the request of Christie Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them all unless the Commissioner would like to take one separately.
Mr. Chairman, can we consider one seven five separately?
All right. Please take one seventy five separate.
Good evening. First is Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one sixty nine, which is a resolution to allow State Senator Valencia C. to host a town hall meeting and dinner at the Frank Bailey Senior Center to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, the event will be held October sixth, two thousand fifteen, from approximately five PM to seven thirty PM. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy is a resolution to amend the Clayton County Program Year Twenty Twelve, Twenty Thirteen, Twenty Fourteen, and Twenty Fifteen Annual Action Plans to allow for the recapture and reuse of funding for projects supported by the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Act, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs to authorize the Chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise to perform any acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses. All is may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy one. As a matter of fact, the next three resolutions all will authorize the county to enter into stipulations and agreements and matters before the State Board of Workers Compensation. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy one is for Upine White. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy two is for Gail Anderson. And resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy three is for Demont Pope. We are requesting that the Board authorize the Chairman or his designate to execute these agreements and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of these three resolutions. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required under the terms of these agreements to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. So, that's one seventy one, seventy, one seventy two, and one seventy three. Resolution number one, twenty fifteen dash one seventy four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton State University will facilitate a service learning project for Clayton State students at Clayton County Senior Centers. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy six is a resolution authorizing Clayton County, Georgia, a resolution by Clayton County, Georgia authorizing the certification and submittal of the Clayton County, Georgia Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Annual Report to the Georgia Environmental Protection Division on behalf of the Transportation and Development Department to authorize the Chairman to execute all required documents and to otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy seven is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to apply for and accept an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, number twenty fifteen CFDA dash sixteen point seven ten in the amount of ninety four thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars with no matching county funds to purchase body worn cameras for the police department. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy eight is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept the donation of surplus office equipment from the United States General Services Administration to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Visions Outreach Incorporated providing for the terms and conditions under which the Fourth Annual Vet Fest will be hosted at the Clayton County International Park. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. This event will be Sunday, August the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, from seven AM to six thirty PM. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections on behalf of the Clayton County Prison for the care and custody of state inmates. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide and, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required under the terms of the agreement. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a grant award agreement with a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council and, in accordance therewith, accept grant funds to be used in connection with the Victims of Crime Act and the Clayton County Court Appointed Special Advocate Program. To authorize the Chairman to execute the grant agreement and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense and to transfer any required match of local funds. All is may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty three is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a contract with the Georgia Department of Human Services and, in accordance therewith, accept grant funds for the Family Connection Collaborative Plan. To authorize the Chairman to execute the contract and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement for exchange of real property with Cummins Blaylock LLC, formerly known as KAD Blaylock Industrial LLC, providing for the terms and conditions under which certain properties will be accepted and conveyed. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And this is part of the Clark Howell Highway Road Project. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with Diversity Talent Agency providing for the terms and conditions under which a Labor Day Weekend Concert will be hosted at Clayton County International Park. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. The event will be held Saturday, September the fifth, through Monday, September seventh, from eleven AM to nine PM each day. Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty seven is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend an existing contract with Dr. Elizabeth Perry, providing for the terms and conditions under which services will be provided to the Clayton County Police Department's Animal Control Division to authorize the Chairman to execute the contract amendment and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And resolution number twenty fifteen dash one eighty eight is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding to allow Commissioner Sana Singleton Gregory to partner with the Castellini Company and American Community Trust to hold a job fair, back to school, and community outreach event at the Carl Rotanizer Recreation Center. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And this event will be held August eighth, two thousand fifteen, from eleven AM until four PM.
All right, is there a motion?
Stand left.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's unanimous.
Resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a contract with the collaborative firm LLC providing for the terms and conditions under which standby and other planning services will be rendered to the county. To authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required under the terms of the agreement. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose.
Nay.
It's four one. It passes.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a request for an order for remission. This is in the matter of State of Georgia versus Jatoy Makia Hoskins and A. Atlanta slash Clayton Bonding, who is a surety in the criminal case that's noted there. And this is in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous.
And Commissioners, I need an executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Is there a second? A second. It probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to reconve- reconvene? I'm sorry. All right, properly moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, who made the motion to reconvene?
Commissioner Edmondson. Oh, I made the motion and Commissioner Edmondson, second. Ms. Barnes?
Yes, sir. We have provided a copy of two agreements to the clerk for her to spread them across the minutes. First is a request for the county to approve a settlement agreement, release of all claims and indemnity agreement with Nicolee J. Obie. This will provide for the discharge of all claims against Clayton County, Georgia, and James Wells relating in any way to a vehicle incident which occurred on July fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. And we've also provided a, a settlement agreement and we're requesting that the county approve this settlement agreement with James Hirsch buying through his conservator, Tina Cannon, to resolve an issue of access to property which is located at five forty two Parkwood, Parkwood Way.
All right, is there a motion?
Are those two separate?
There are two separate agreements and, yes.
Motion to approve both.
Second.
Did you read both of them? Did you read both of them?
I did.
Okay, I must miss. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve both. Are there any questions on either item? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
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 Pose. It's unanimous. All right, thank you. This time, I'd like to present, make a recommendation to the Board to appoint Deputy Chief Michael Register as the interim Chief of Police for the Clayton County Police Department. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose. It's unanimous. That's, unless there's any other business for this Board, is there a motion to adjourn?
Stand住了.
I'll second. Properly moved and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.